Good morning. My name is Don Michaelman, and I want to welcome you to the September 29th, 2022 public hearing of the City of Prescott Planning Commission. If you have any cell phones, could you check them to make sure it's on mute or off? Would appreciate that. We'll have our commission members introduce themselves. We have one commission member on Zoom. Susan, would you like to start off introducing yourself, Susan?
Yes, good morning. I'm Susan Graham.
Butch?
Good morning. Butch Tracy.
Tom Riley.
Ted Gambogi.
Okay. As staff members come up to make presentations, they will introduce themselves on that. This is an open public hearing and is being taped, recorded, and videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public, local cable and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. The number of commissions present either in body or in spirit is five and require a majority vote of those present to pass a motion. As some individuals may be attending this meeting remotely, all parties wishing to be heard, including commission members, are required to state their name prior to speaking in order to ensure accurate minutes. Members of the public, when called upon, are required to state their name and address for record so that we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them at a later date if necessary on that. So starting off, we have the minutes from the September 8th, 2022, and the September 22nd, 2022 meetings on that. Are there any corrections? If no corrections, is there a motion?
So moved.
To accept.
Moved to accept.
And a second.
And a second. Okay. Any further discussion? If none, Kaylee?
Yes, and can we just clarify? I don't know the legal.
It's 22nd, we don't really have to approve.
We need two separate motions for two separate sets of minutes.
I think they can do it in a single motion.
Okay.
They can do it in a single motion.
Thank you. Okay. Butch Tracy?
Who'd approve?
Tom Riley?
Approve.
Susan Graham?
Approve.
Ted Gambogi?
Approve.
Don Michaelman?
I have a split decision here because I was not present for September 8th, so I can't really honestly approve that, but as a present for the 22nd, so I can approve that.
Okay, I can note that. Thank you. So both sets are passed.
We're not looking at a quorum. Do we have a quorum issue on that, on the four-person vote?
We have.
No, we have five altogether. We have only two missing out of the seven.
So if he recused.
Abstention.
Ah, that would be four.
That's a four out of the seven members.
Yeah, we still have a quorum.
But it's majority of those here.
Right.
So, okay. Next item. PLN 21-007, preliminary plat of South Ranch at Deepwell subdivision, units 1, 2, and 3. Zoning Special Plan Communities, SPC, property owner James Deepwell Ranches, Number 1 LLC, APN 102-05-036A. George?
Thanks, Chairman and Commissioners. This is a proposed preliminary plat that you've actually seen once before. So I'm going to run through a little bit of background information for you, but also perhaps help provide some guide rails for the discussion today because you've been involved in a lot of discussions recently about airport-related items that don't apply to this project. And I will explain why they don't.
George, could you tell us one, we saw this before?
June 9th was the meeting that you tabled the item. So at your June 9th meeting, there was a presentation about the plat itself, but there was also discussion from our airport director regarding the need for additional information and a request to you to table the item pending the acquisition of that additional information. You did table the item indefinitely pending the completion of discussions with the airport and Ash Dorn. Ash Dorn is the name of the development company. And those discussions have occurred. The city and Ash Dorn have met a number of times, agreed to specific stipulations for the future development process. Those stipulations don't apply to the plat itself. They apply to future development on the site. FAA rules, height obstructions, things like that are not typically associated with the horizontal regime of a plat. This is flat. And then all of those things that were negotiated and made part of this stipulation agreement will occur later as construction begins. And that would apply to pretty much any construction, starting with infrastructure, anything that could affect the airspace above the ground. So the agreements have been reached. Both Ash Dorn and the city have acknowledged those and are okay with this proceeding through you for a look at the plat itself. One other thing that we have to talk about a little bit is all of the discussions you've had recently on the AVO. Those discussions are for a proposed ordinance change that is not in effect and does not apply to this plat. We're operating with the conditions we have, the conditions we had two years ago. That is the review that you're doing today. So we're going to try and contain our presentation to the plat design, the design of the layout of lots, the road connections, the things you normally see during a subdivision plat review. Your job is to review them for the purpose of compliance with the city's codes, good design, making sure that staff has looked at all the things that you think we should look at as part of a plat process. And just to reiterate one last time, the negotiations that caused the item to be put on hold have occurred and conclusions have been reached and agreement with both the city and the development company have been reached. So we're in agreement with them over moving this plat forward. One other thing of note, some additional information was provided by the airport director that I just got this morning. It's just general information about why this plat can move forward as opposed to some of the other concerns we have causing the creation of the AVO. That we're having copies made, so you'll have that comment letter probably before we finish this meeting.
That'd be a good idea.
So just to do the typical background, a location, the location of the plat is within this area of the subdivision. Right now, it's a single large parcel. It will be divided by the subdivision plat. All right. A little bit better look at it, showing where it is in Deepwell Ranch. This is Highway 89. This is Pioneer Parkway, and this is Willow Creek Road. So it is to the west of Willow Creek Road and to the west of the approaches to the airport. The layout of the property is pretty standard for subdivisions we're seeing today. Curved streets, in this case cul-de-sacs, although there have been some discussions about on the final plat actually linking some of these cul-de-sacs together with streets to make them a little bit safer as far as being able to ingress egress through the property. Fire Department prefers to have street connections, and so does planning rather than cul-de-sacs. The main roadway access to the property will be off of this roadway. This is called James Lane. That's partially under construction now. This roadway that provides the main access into the subdivision for each of the individual lots is called Jenna Lane, and that project is moving forward simultaneous with this. So they're in process of doing water and sewer infrastructure and road design and construction, typical of a subdivision plat. The plat itself will create the right-of-way for that road, so it is necessary to create the right-of-way in order to build the road. And then once that road is in place, access into the subdivision is from two points from each of the, each side of the road, east and west of the road, with interconnected streets so that if something were to happen to block one of these, fire egress is handled by internal road connections to allow an additional exit. Both sides of the road have a similar situation. The roadway is designed to allow people to get out for fire safety purposes. The proposal is for 359 lots. If in the future for final plat, they connect some of these cul-de-sacs, they may lose a lot or two, which is fine under our rules for final plats. You can't increase the number of lots, but you can decrease them and still be in conformance with the preliminary plat. The overall property is 87.3 acres, and based on the number of units in the area of open space that they've provided, they're at about four dwelling units per acre, which is kind of low for a density development. It looks dense, but if you consider the open space areas, it's actually a relatively low density for development. Most of the property is within the airport impact zone 6. There is a small piece of it that's touched by impact zone 4, but under the current rules, impact zone 4 allows residential development. Again, access is from Willow Creek Road through Jenna and James Lane. And just general information, the property owner is Ash Dorn. I have a couple of closer-in-zoomed pictures of it just to show you a little bit more of how the lot arrangement is done. This is very, very much the same type of development as the Westwood developments that you have already approved to the north of this location. The design, the road layouts, the cul-de-sacs, the lot sizes even, are very similar. The SPC zoning that's in place allows for multiple types of density in residential. It meets the requirements of the density level that they've chosen. Did I call that one out? I didn't. So they have identified the subdivision as an estate and village are the two designations under their master plan. I realize how nondescriptive those terminologies are. Village is a high-density development. Estate is a somewhat larger lot. They're calling these two areas Village and this area Estate. Based on staff's review of the master plan, they meet the criteria required under both of those layers. So, did you have a question, sir? Go ahead, please.
I do. The shape of this is different than the shape of the very first visual you showed. So could you?
It is.
Yeah.
So just some criteria. This is James Lane currently. James Lane will extend out, so this subdivision is located right there.
So it's going to sort of fit in the middle?
I'm sorry.
It's going to fit in the sort of the middle of the?
The northern half of this parcel is where it's going to be located. And I do have, I do have a drawing that I'll show you that shows its location, but it has some extra information on it that I didn't want to confuse the discussions with because it shows some new information relating to the AVO. This is the face page. We gave you the entire subdivision plat as part of your packet. Man, at that point, I can answer questions for you.
Before we move into questions of staff, I'd like to also announce that Commissioner Golagowski has joined us by Zoom on that. So, questions for staff?
Ted? I don't remember exactly where, but somewhere in the write-up, we talked about splays. Could you show where the splays would be on any one of the diagrams that you have?
So I don't have a map that shows the airport splay because it is something that is still being worked on. There is an older version of a splay that I think you've seen in AVO presentations, and then a proposed newer version. Neither of them have been rendered into any document that makes them formal. I do have a document that shows the impact zones and the noise contours, but again, it's from the AVO discussion, and that's proposed, not in place at this time. Does that help? No.
If I can help out, George, a little bit? The airport has reviewed this project, and it's outside the splay as it was rendered.
That helps.
So somewhere outside of this diagram and inside of the red, that one, is a splay?
Correct. If you recall how that aligns, the runway, the main runway is here. All of the impact zones that come off of it and the airline splay come from that alignment. This project is outside of that alignment, and the actual splay, the turn location, occurs south of this location. It would affect development down here, potentially in the future when it's adopted, but at present it's south of this location. And again, if you look at the shape of this.
So the homes are north of the splay.
This phase of the subdivision is all north of the splay, and it's outside of the adverse impact zones.
Thank you.
Tom?
There's got to be a lot more questions.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. First of all, one of the things that in Exhibit 1 that you have here talks about South Ranch agrees to portion subdivision plan, the impact zone 4. You said it's not there. This says it is there.
No.
It also says that the, I guess I'm confused.
It crosses a small piece of the property in this corner from the secondary runway. So it's not the primary runway, the secondary runway. A small piece of it touches that corner, but under all of the current rules, impact zone 4 allows residential development. We're reviewing this under the current rules, not a proposed AVO. We can't.
No, I'm not looking.
Okay.
I'm responding to your Exhibit 1.
Yep. And that Exhibit 1 actually shows a little bit right in this corner that's touched by impact zone 4 from the secondary runway. This is the one that, when you were at the airport meetings, the planes that seemed to be taking off right at the.
Yeah, no, I know where it is.
That's the runway.
I know what you're talking about. Okay, also in Exhibit 1, there is a sentence in here that says, "South Ranch agrees to the navigation easement and fair disclosure document will be provided to any prospective home buyer upon request as part of the fair disclosure notices." So that bothers me. So I have to ask for, you know, hey, am I in an airport area before they give me any information about that? That's not.
The navigation easement is an automatic. That will get recorded with the subdivision plat. They agreed to that in the master plan and the DA for Deepwell Ranch in 2017.
What about the people that are buying houses there?
They're getting the navigation easement as part of their closing package. The notice, the fair notice disclosure is something we're going to require through the AVO if it gets approved with that language in it. At this stage in the process, though, that is something that they've agreed to do in their development agreement and in their master plan, and they've agreed to include it in CCNRs, for instance, so that people will have that.
They've agreed to do that?
Yes.
So then this thing, upon request, this should be reworded, in other words, in order to be able to say that the applicant has agreed to do this, instead of saying upon request? And Exhibit 1 is incorrect the way it is right now?
Well, I think the question here is that everybody was getting it as part of a closing. That's kind of, as a matter of law and as a matter of fact, anybody who bought property would get these disclosures. The question kind of arose that some people would be interested in the property but wanting to know more about, but not necessarily at a stage to close or at a stage to buy, and would want information about the navigation easement. And for those people, if they're requested, even though they weren't in the closing process, that they could get this information as well prior to that. That's what was intended to discuss.
So we couldn't make as a stipulation as part of the plat approval that anybody, that everybody who was looking at the lots be notified that, you know, this is, there is a navigation easement that goes along with buying this property? Could we make that a stipulation? Is that legal?
It is. For anybody who buys it, it's already the case. And so the question you said is anybody who looks at it. And it's hard to define what that means. And so that's why we put in the information if someone requests it, that they should get it. But at some point before, you know, an interest popping up in someone's head to the point where they buy it, they have to be provided that information.
That doesn't seem right to me. Caveat emptor, huh?
Well, I suppose that's correct. It's part of closing documents. They have to see it. It's an easement like any other easement on a property. And so the buyer would, as a 100% fact, get this information, whether they review.
When they get it is the, I get it. I understand what you're doing. I just don't like it.
So one of the reasons we've proposed modifications in the AVO in the future is to address some of your concerns. More questions?
No, not now.
Butch? Question on street parking. The lots seem to have a sort of a narrow frontage there. When you add in a two-car driveway, there's not a whole lot of space left in front of the house for parking. And I don't notice any community parking around there either. Is that a challenge? And can you park on both sides of the street, or what?
The parking on both sides depends to some degree on driveway alignments and mailbox placements. In most new subdivisions, the mailboxes are a gang box. They're placed in one location, so we don't have that concern with this subdivision. There have been no reports that I am aware of, of problems or complaints with street parking in the subdivisions that have already been built by Dorn Home, by Ash Dorn Homes to the north, Westwood specifically, which has a very similar layout and very similar street sizes. So I don't believe that is a problem. Public parking of publicly-owned streets is available unless the fire department or police department believes there's a hazard that's caused by parking, and then they can designate parking one side only.
Okay.
And that has happened in some neighborhoods. Generally, the minimum street width that we require for all new streets, private or public streets, is sufficient to allow parking on both sides and still room for an emergency vehicle to get through.
We have some cul-de-sacs in here that have some length to it. Are houses going to be required to be sprinkled?
One of the reasons I think they are looking at potentially connecting some of those is to avoid that situation, but if they meet a sufficient length, the houses are required to be sprinkled. So, yes. And the fire department has reviewed the layouts, the street length, and has identified if properties will need sprinkler systems. The benefit of the layout they provided is that there's a lot of interconnectivity which allows for fire ingress and egress, and it shortens some of the cul-de-sacs because of that. From the fire department's perspective, for instance, on this very northernmost line, the cul-de-sac begins here. So relatively short. If you start back here, it looks much longer, but because there's street connectivity and a loop for traffic to get in and out, including emergency traffic, it meets the requirements. We individually require sprinkler systems of certain homes rather than require an entire subdivision sprinkler, based on conditions and requirements.
Is the applicant here to make any comments?
We do have a representative of the applicant here. I don't know.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ashley Marsh of Gammage and Burnham, 40 North Central. I don't have much to add, other than if you have any questions for us. We've worked with Planning Department, with city attorney, with the airport director on addressing their concerns, which were mostly vertical construction-related. That document, that exhibit that you see in front of you is a working document. It's intended to be kind of a process and operation, how to move this project forward to address construction concerns. I'm happy to answer any questions that this commission has, but really appreciate all the work that staff's done on this project. Your city attorney has done, and the airport director as well, to get us to a point where we all feel comfortable moving forward. So thank you for your time and consideration this morning. Again, happy to address any questions you have, but don't have any more substantive information to provide other than what Mr. Worley briefed you with here and again at the June 9th meeting.
Any question, Tom?
Yes, you're probably not involved with the sales process. So would you be able to speak to the notification of potential buyers that this, that there is a navigation easement that goes along with the house and when that might happen?
Thank you, Chair Commissioner Riley. Appreciate that question. You're correct, I'm not involved with the sales process. We do have documentation at close, as your city attorney mentioned. The navigation easement is part of that. That's been part of the master planning. We also have our public disclosure documents. Our public report has that information. So that information is available. We are working through to make sure people know when to get it, but in the sales process, it does happen at close as part of that packet with the navigation easement.
It would be nice if it happened sooner than that.
Before you go, any other questions? Stan, Susan, do you have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
This is Stan Gallegos.
No, I do not.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I know, and I feel that most of my answers were, my questions were answered last time we spoke on this.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for us? We want to make sure you have enough information.
Yeah, I have a question, George. Did you say the fire department has reviewed this?
All of our departments review subdivision plats and approve them before we bring them to you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Here. I would make a note, we have changed the motion language just slightly because the original motion language, we mentioned the stipulation agreement, but it's unrelated to the subdivision plat approval. So we recommend this motion language if you intend to recommend approval.
Do you have a copy? No. I'm sure you have it right there. It's fine. No motion made, then?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Stan?
You put it back on the screen. I can't see. Thank you.
It's up there.
I would recommend approval of PNL 21-007, preliminary plat of South Ranch at Deepwell Ranch, units 1, 2, and 3.
We have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, Butch Tracy, I'll second.
This is Susan Graham. I second the motion.
Okay.
I'll mark Butch. He got there first.
Okay. We have a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? If no further discussion, Kaylee, would you call the roll, please?
Butch Tracy?
It approves.
Tom Riley?
Approve.
Susan Graham? Stan Gallegoski?
Approve.
Ted Gambogi?
Approved.
Don Michaelman?
Approve.
The motion passes 6-0.
Next, we have updates. George, anything?
We do have some updates on the general plan. I'm going to turn it over to Tammy to talk to you about that.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Commission. Tammy Dewitt, Community Planner, the City of Prescott. We're going to give you an update on our general plan. Yesterday, we had our second general plan committee meeting. We kind of went over the roles of staff in the committee and our kind of our timeline. So we wanted to kind of show you the timeline so you have an idea of when things are going to happen and when you're going to be seeing it later in the future. Okay, so our overall goal in our general plan is to create the long-range community vision and plan. That's what we're doing. We're creating, we're getting the input from the community on what they see the vision of the City of Prescott being, and we want to create a plan that is based around that So the committee responsibilities, they're going to be a key component and outreach. We are going to get a lot of community outreach, as much as we can. We want to break any records that we have seen and just get as much input from every facet of the community that we can. If we see neighborhoods that we aren't getting responses for, we want to reach out to those areas. But the committee is going to be a key role in helping us do the outreach through participation and also any volunteers that we may need through that process. They're going to help us get all that. So once we got the plan together and it's been approved by council, staff cannot advocate the plan for the votes, as it goes to going to the vote for the community. So they're going to help us gather support for voter information that goes on the ballot and then help us disseminate the information out about the plan and before the election. So that's going to be, the committee's going to be a key role in that. Staff responsibilities, you know, we have a team that we are putting together, who we are. Basically, the project manager, I'm the project manager for our plan update. We have a project team core, which is our Staff responsibilities, you know, we have a team that we are putting together, who we are. Basically, the project manager, I'm the project manager for our plan update. We have a project team core, which is our city planning staff. We meet weekly to keep ourselves going and excited about this process. We're going to create a project team, which will have representatives from all the city departments to provide input as we're updating the plan, get the latest information, find out what they're working on. We make sure that we're including that in the plan. And then we also have project partners from Simpo to ADOT, Forest Service, Game and Fish. You have Pike County, the surrounding jurisdictions. Someone also mentioned state parks because we may be having them included in some of our open space planning. So our timeline, what has been done? So the citizen participation plan was adopted by the city council when they created the committee, and that's a fluid document that will be changing as we move forward through this process. And they also appointed the committee. So 2023, that's the year of public outreach. Next year is when, starting January, we're going to start figuring out what we're going to do. We're going to start setting up meetings, finding out where we need to go, and start getting on those agendas, go to different events, go to the schools to get kids involved. We want input from the younger generation, be it the high schools, getting input from like government classes, get them involved in the surveys and such, creating the surveys, getting those out to the public, and then media through papers, social media, and the radio. We're going to do a lot of outreach to get as much involvement as possible. But this is a very important component of the general plan update is the outreach. We want to get the input from the citizens. We want their opinions. We want their ideas so we can include that in the update. 2024 is refining the vision and plan. We're going to complete the plan. We have a 60-day public comment period that's required. Then it'll be coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we may, we'll probably do that even before we start the 60-day comment period to make sure that the commission feels that we have addressed, we created the plan, we have the vision, and that we're on the right track. Then we'll have our 60-day public comment period. This is required by state statutes. And then it comes before the Planning and Zoning Commission and then goes to city council for approval. We're hoping to have this all done by December 2024. That's our goal so we can get on the August 2025 election ballot. 2025 is the voter campaign, which will start in February. We have to have everything into the county to be on the election. We'll have press releases, open houses, and then committee doing the outreach to gain resupport since we can't advocate the plan. We can go to meetings and explain and answer questions, but we cannot advocate for it. That's going to be the job of the committee to help us get out, get the support that we're going to need. And then August election ballot, that's our goal. And that's basically our update for today. Does anyone have any questions? Yes.
One of the things, partners, that you may want to also include would be, this is Tom Riley, by the way, state lands. The state land department would probably be good to outreach. They always feel like they're slighted with these things going on.
Yes, we'll have them as a partner through it to the process. Thank you. That's. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Tammy.
If staff has no other comments for you today, if you have questions, now's the chance, and then, yes, sir.
Question. Do we have anything coming in front of city council that myself and Ted need to attend?
Not at this time.
Okay.
We will alert you well in advance. We have to create an agenda item and put it on the council's agenda about two weeks in advance, so you'll get almost two weeks' notice.
All righty. If nothing else, the meeting is adjourned.